Thank you. Good evening, good late afternoon, whatever we want to call it. I would like to welcome you to the Committee of a Whole for June 10th. If our clerk could please read the role.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Washington. Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Spitzley.
We do have an excused absence for Councilmember Spitzley and I do believe that Councilmember Dunbar currently will be having an excused absence. She's dealing with some flooding issues, so with the rain that we've had. So with that, we have the minutes of June 3rd. Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the minutes of June 30, 2019.
We have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes with my vote, so thank you. Well, I didn't hear anybody else's, so with that, we have public comment at this time. If there is someone in the audience that would like to make public comment, this is your opportunity to do it if you would come to the podium.
Loretta Stanaway for the Friends of Lansing Historic Cemeteries. And I would just like to thank the recommendation of the General Services Committee this morning to approve funding for the purchase or the payment to the city of the cost of marker cuts for the 60 markers for the boys at the Boys Training School site in Mount Hope Cemetery that have gone, some of them almost 150 years without markers on their graves. So we truly appreciate the recommendation and we look forward to council's vote this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other council comment or public comments at this time?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Nancy Malo. I'm president of the Eastside Neighborhood Organization. And I want to thank you too for the vote this morning with General Services regarding the Boys Training School site. I know I've been working on this project for many, many years and I can't tell you how much I appreciate that these boys are finally getting an identity, so thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment at this time? Seeing none, we will move into our agenda and we have a presentation by Terry Link this afternoon. And are there PowerPoints in the back for the audience as well? There are PowerPoints in the back for the audience. Councilmembers have those and our city TV has those. So with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Link. And if you would like to begin, that would be great. Thank you. And just make sure that the green light is on. Yes?
I think it is. I also, but would it be inappropriate or okay if I started using the microphone? Does this presentation easier than this and that's about the point?
No, that's, you are addressing us and we can see.
I figured I turned the microphone around. I talked about video being a big advantage.
Okay. Okay.
Thirty minutes of me just sitting here talking. Plus it would be easier for you.
See, okay. All right. That, all right, as long as you make sure that you're presenting to us, okay.
I guess now it actually does.
All right, now you are on, okay.
So I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. It's a privilege that you're giving the time to address what I think is a pretty serious issue. A little bit about my background, in case you're not aware of it, that might be relevant to my conversation here this evening, but I'm open to questions and I've reserved a lot of time for Q and A because I hopefully believe that that will be the most useful part of the presentation. Most relevant, I was the founding director of MSU's Office of Campus Sustainability. I did that for nine years and then I left on leave of absence to become the Greater Lansing Food Bank Executive Director in an attempt to merge at the time two major food banks in the community. Remember, we had a Mid Michigan Food Bank. Once we consolidated those, I did want to manage a larger operation and it was time for me to step back. I came back to university in a part-time role while I did some sustainability consulting. I've been active in a lot of groups in the community over a long period of time. I'm currently Chair of the Peace Education Center. I'm on the Board of the Greater Lansing United Nations Association. I'm on the Board of the U.S. Partnership for Education for Sustainable Development. We had our bimonthly quarterly conference call just this afternoon. So that's kind of the background that I bring to this, other than I being a living human being just like the rest of you. So the presentation, they'll put that up there and we'll start the following.
There we go.
Is really about sustainable Lansing. Is it possible? And I want to, I want to stress, if you get nothing else from there, the notes, you can take notes and I'll tell you a little bit about more information that you get from PowerPoint. If you have it electronically, you can click on some of this stuff and get the full depth whereas what you're getting here are the slides. I also have a brief handout for you. The concept is really to put yourself in a situation to think about the possibilities. First part of my presentation, I'm going to run through the slides really quickly and then I'm going to move to a little second part that's going to talk about the evolving concept of what the word sustainability means in the world and how people are using it, how it might apply here. And then finally, I want to talk specifically about Lansing and urban sustainability specifically. And I've done a lot of homework over the last 10 days, as you can see by a number of the books here that I'll reference, though I'm still knowledgeable in the larger field, I haven't worked, I've been a county commissioner too, so I understand what it's like to be on the other side. And I could tell you a little bit about some experiences in my work as a county commissioner that relate specifically to this as well. So with that, we'll jump to the next slide, which is the first of a series of slides that deals with the warnings that we've had for a long time about this series of crises that we are facing. And you can read that, but I'll read it with you. This comes from 1,500 scientists in 1992. This is right around the time of the Rio Earth Summit, when the earth came together. The nations of the world came together to talk about development and the environment at the same time. Human beings and the natural world are on a collision course. Human activities inflict harsh and often irreversible damage on the environment and on critical resources. If not checked, many of our current practices put at serious risk the future that we wish for human society and the plant and animal kingdoms and so alter the living world that it will be unable to sustain life in the movement in the manner that we now know. Fundamental changes are urgent if we are to avoid the collision our present course will bring about. Next slide, please. Fast forward, almost 10 years, right after the 9/11. The Nobel Peace Prize was, the Nobel Prizes were celebrating their 100th anniversary. And so all the living Nobel laureates came to Oslo for a celebration. And at that time, right after September 11th, they wrote this statement. "The most profound danger to the world peace in the coming years will stem not from the irrational acts of states or individuals, but from legitimate demands the world's dispossessed. Of these poor and disenfranchised, the majority live a marginal existence in equatorial climates. Global warming, not of their making, but originating with the wealthy few, will affect their fragile ecologies most. Their situation will be desperate and manifestly unjust." Next slide, please. Bucky Fuller, one of the great creators and then the kind of people that we know, said that you never change things by fighting the existing reality. To change something, you build a new model that makes the existing model obsolete. And that's what I hope to do this evening. Next slide, please. Next slide. This graphic shows, maybe can't see it from a distance, you'll see that the Arctic Ice Age is going along quite nicely and then all of a sudden it just drops. This is the concerns of scientists with the whole lags built into the climbing, climate change things. Things are going, in some ways, you're going to see a couple more slides. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on climate science tonight. We could do hours and hours on that, but we don't have time for all that. I'm trying to embed this in a larger context for you. But there's dramatic jump times. I was just reading an article today on permafrost. We can get into that next. Next slide, please. Slides are going to come kind of fast. You won't see, there's three curves there. Basically, the CO2 concentration, that second curve, you see the steep slope on that? This is what we're putting into the atmosphere. This particular slide comes from Great Britain and it talks about by 2023, we'll have already hit what they were projecting for 2040 in terms of the amount of carbon going into the atmosphere. Next slide, please. This is an important slide for people who don't understand the science behind climate science. We get nothing else out of this. So the IPCC, which put this together, 1,500 scientists from around the world studying all the different parts of the climate together over these series of reports. This is from two reports ago. That gray area that you see in the middle, that's where the, they took about 1,000 different climate models and most of them predicted this range by 2,100 of like a 2 to 4 degree range in Celsius increase by that time. Those darker gray areas were areas that where there were a few studies that said, oh, it'll be a little less and a few that said, oh, it'll be a little more. We now know that those estimates were underestimated. Next slide, please. And if we want to make the kind of changes that we need to get to 2040, but the scientists are telling us now, you can see this kind of decline that we have to go between now and 2040. And this is from very recent data and the amount of cutting that we have to do is enormous. Next slide, please. Now, this is one that almost, I've been giving this, talks like this for 20 some years. This comes from the UN Millennium Ecosystem Assessment, done by 1,500 scientists around the world over a number of years, published in 2003. That graph shows in 2003 that most of our ecosystems then were in decline. But we don't talk as much about the decline of ecosystems because we're captured by climate science of and by itself. Next slide, please. Next slide.
There.
Ecological footprint. Ecological footprint is a measure of the amount of arable usable land that we have. So most of the planet is water and we had a bunch of ice, we've got some deserts, we've got some mountains that we can't use. But you take that, the rest of the land that's available and how much productivity is possible out of that and how much can it absorb our waste? Ecological footprint tries to measure that. If you look at that graph more closely, you will see that by about 1980, we started living off the capital, no longer the interest. We were using the interest built up over billions of years. As a human species now, we have entered the space where we are now spending down the capital. And as if that, that line that you see going upward is basically the global GDP line. And if that's, that's business as usual line. You can see that by 2050 on there, we're going to need two full planets to supply what we're doing. It's just physically impossible. Next slide, please. Now, this is a report that I stumbled on of the same character. 300 social scientists, three years' worth of study, from around the world, representing every major social science in every continent, got together to look at what does human progress look like? They made three, I got actually, this is one of the three physical volumes. I'm not all the way through volume one yet. I read the summary, but not the whole volume, just so I can tell you, I can't read everything. But the three, the three pressing points they make that are at the heart of this are equity, sustainability, and freedom. By equity, they mean reduce inequalities of development between countries and social inequalities within countries. Sustainability, put the planet back on a track that preserves ecosystems and the human beings for future generations. And freedom, expand and deepen basic liberties, the rule of law, and democratic rights for all populations. We simply cannot undertake minor changes, small fine tuning of policies and the avert looming crisis, a more fundamental transformation is needed. We believe that this transformation is possible. Three main goals must be pursued and those are the three main goals. Next slide. Average income. You're all familiar with income. That's the amount of money that we make every year. The average household income in the United States is around $53,000 a year. This is the average individual income. You see that the bottom 90% average only 34. You've all, you, we're all in, in the atmosphere now where we understand income inequality. It's all around us, thanks to Occupy, thanks to people like Bernie Sanders. It's in the vernacular now we talk about it. Next slide. You've also probably seen this fact that eight billionaires have as much wealth as half the people on the planet. Okay, next slide. This is a slide you're probably not as familiar with. This is median wealth here in the United States today. There are disparity between what the white community owns and what the black and Latino own. It's a legacy cost that we need to address as we're dealing with all of this. Next slide, please. Declining health. Lot of stuff going on in health right now. Just, this is a relatively recent report from, and I'm going to give you a summary of this report and some paper that I have here, so you don't have to read the whole report, from the European community. Next slide, please. This is a report from just two weeks ago. Researchers at the University of Illinois, you might have caught part of this on some news, depending on what news channels you listen to. Scientists looked at about 1,000 different studies looking at the effects of air pollution. And they found this list of impacts spread across to the understanding that it is, they now believe that air pollution, the particulate matter that's in air pollution, is affecting every cell in our body. So it's affecting my cognitive skills, it's affecting asthma, it's connecting lots of things that we didn't know about. Next slide, please. We're going to end the depressing part here. The concept of progress as we've measured over time has arguably been tied to economic growth and GDP. And so you see that line that goes straight up, that GDP line, that green line. But when you measure what really counts in human life, what has been determined through studies of others called the genuine progress indicator is one. And this is where we take in access to education, long-term health and safety and all those other kinds of issues that we all would love to be able to have. You'll see that we, we bottomed out at about 1980. We haven't moved a muscle, even though that we're, we're growing economically, we're not doing anything in the United States in terms of building quality of life. Next slide, please. So my argument and my introduction to sustainability starts here. So I argue that we have been operating for a long time under this framework here, which means there's an economy, there's a society, and there's the environment. And I would argue that we, they're not three concentric, they are three equal circles in that diagram, but they're not equal in the way we treat them. We treat the economy as everything, which is why every question, when you're on that side of the table, as I was when I was a council commissioner, county commissioner, is we can't afford that. Next slide, please. Albert Einstein says, "To do the same thing over and over again and expect different results is the definition of insanity." Next slide, please. So people started struggling with this idea. Back one more, please. You skipped one. You should have one that's kind of darker on your, on your, there. So what, what came out in the, in the late 70s, early 80s was this idea that we had to do development that also took care of the environment. And that came out of a conference, a couple of world conferences, but it became known as sustainable development. And the basic definition that most people use when they talk about sustainability is that one that you see up there, meeting the needs of the present generation without prejudicing the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. In other words, we don't rob the future of our children and our grandchildren. The business world, some years later, took on the moniker of calling it the triple bottom line. I'm giving a keynote address at the Sustainable, Southeast Michigan Sustainable Business Forum in two weeks. Business community, certain portions of the business community are way out in front on some of this stuff. And we can talk a lot more about that and the opportunities there. But next slide, please. But sustainability is not a static thing. Even in my education, which is continuing, by the way, I don't consider myself done with this. This comes from, it's a German research institute and Friends of the Earth got together and they thought, yeah, it's got the, the environmental at the bottom and over on the left you see the economic and over there and you see on the social. But they added this fourth dimension called participatory stuff. Who gets to decide how to balance those kinds of things? And it's an important element that I think is pertinent if you move forward in this direction. Next slide. And then this is Terry's idea of sustainability. This actually comes from my work on an encyclopedia that I was associate editor for. There's a lot of volumes here. And the idea behind this is that unlike that first set of three circles that you see, of three independent spheres, the economy and society are wholly owned subsidiaries of the environment. If the environment doesn't produce what we need in the way of food, oxygen, and the other elements of water that we need to life, there won't be a society. If there's no society, we don't need an economy. We have flipped that around and we need to fix that. And if we don't change that trajectory, we're in real trouble. But you'll also notice that I have a lot of things moving through there because they're not separate spheres, they're all interacting all the time, which makes this a real challenge to deal with all this stuff. Next slide. So in 2015, all the member stations of the United Nations, all of them, all 193 of them, agreed to what are called the Sustainable Development Goals. They are, as you can see, 17 goals laid out there. Number 11 specifically is about sustainable cities. But obviously, all of them relate to some extent on how we survive on this planet. Now, these 17 goals have tied to them 169 targets and 232 indicators that nation-states are supposed to be looking at and charting and reporting on every year to see of our progress, making it to, to reduce the impacts and to improve ourselves in all of these areas between now and 2030. And there's, there's just tons of work going on. You wouldn't know it if you read the Lansing State Journal or even the Detroit Free Press. But if you delve into the community that's working on this, and I talked to some people even today who are, are working on this at various levels, including businesses, civil society organizations, higher education is tying their own standards now to those same kind of indicators that are going now. The business world is doing this and cities are doing this. Next slide. So this, I'm going to give you the cheat sheet on this will be in the bundle too. This is called, I can't even read it from here, but it's, it's a guide to tying sustainability for cities specifically to the SDGs. So if you get serious about this, this is a, this is a tool that you or the people that run the programs for the city would certainly want to be in connection with so that they can monitor and stay in tune with what's going on in the world. Next slide, please. The Alberg Charter, 2004. This, the Alberg Charter is, I think, 200 and some odd, it's more than that. Forty countries in Europe, the cities and municipalities in there got together and said, we have to move forward in a different way. So they have come together collectively to work on these. And in 2004, they came together and did these particular commitments. And you'll see the breadth of these commitments. Covers governance and management, natural common goods, responsible consumption, planning design, better mobility, local action for health, sustainable local economy, social equity and justice, and local to global, tying them all together. And so there's a real community of people and organizations and cities already working on this globally. Next slide, please. This comes from this very thick book right here. It's also very heavy. I just picked this out of the library the other day when I went to do my research. This comes from the Urban Climate Change Research Network. And I've also got a cheat sheet on that, an executive summary of sorts that I will give to the secretary to make copies of. It's about 20 some pages long, so I'm not sure everybody would want to read it. But if you really are interested in looking at this at a little more depth, this would be a particular place to go. Next slide. Oxfam. Civil society is working on this all over the world. This is not just a developing world issue, this is a developed world issue. And Oxfam works in both, though most of its time is spent overseas. But their, their orientation, I think, is, is a good one. Access to public resources, urban renewal actions, reductions of CO2 emissions, favoring ethical consumption and reduce reuse and recycle. Next slide. C40 is another set of global cities. These are the largest cities in the world. Some 90 cities includes New York, Chicago, a number of other cities all over the world that are, that are coming together in networks to specifically deal with climate change. Now Lansing is probably a little bit too small to be in that particular group. But the learning that goes on in these networks is crucial to see what might be possible in places like Lansing and other communities of the world. And there's lots of tools from all of these groups and networks that are there once a city makes a decision that it wants to move forward in these directions. Next slide, please. Yes. This, this is an example of, this is real case studies on seven of these key cities and the, and the motion that they're making. I spoke today with a former student of mine, graduated 2008, Tremaine Phillips, graduated the degree, he had a double degree, I forget exactly what it was. He went in and got a master's in environmental studies, went and worked for state government and their energy office for a while, and went off to law school, got a good degree in law school. He is now director of something called Cincinnati 2030. And it is this very enhanced program of bringing all the players in the community together to address sustainability in an organized way. I was learning about the examples and the commitment that goes in there, the tying of the, the major actors in the community. In that case, it's Procter and Gamble and I forget a couple of the other big corporations, but also the universities that are tied to it and of course the city as well. So coming together in these partnerships makes this stuff possible. It's an opportunity to build bridges across what's otherwise a very diverse landscape. Next slide, please. U.S. Conference of Mayors has done a number of reports. This is one called Best Practices. I did not look at the report, but again, these are examples of the opportunities that are out there if we choose to move forward in ways that can have multiple wins across all three of those circles, not just the economic, not just the social, not just the environmental. Next slide, please. And of course, the business world, very much involved in doing this kind of work, including the very big World Council, Business Council for Sustainable Development, has a whole section dealing with zero emission cities. It's looking just at the climate side of that whole thing and how can we move those? So not only do we remove the emissions, well, that air pollution, that's a problem that's been reported more recently, as well as the cost of carbon to the rest of the planet that we're releasing all the time. And build better life for people in terms of mobility and other kinds of things in the city. Next slide. Global covenant of mayors. Again, mayors and players are acting together cohesively around the world. We know no borders in terms of air pollution, in terms of what goes on economically anymore, so we need to do this collectively. And they said that this needs to happen in the next two decades. The impacts of climate change will be experienced in the next decades by the world's 8 billion people, most of them in the cities. Urban policymakers play a key role in adapting to and driving solutions to climate change, but they must act fast and cannot do it alone. Just before I forget, at the bottom of those, if you had the online version of this, which I don't know if it'll be posted or not, if you were to click on that, it would take you to the full report and that's true on all the slides before I forget to tell you that. Next slide. Vancouver is a particularly interesting city in North America that's always been cutting edge. The University of British Columbia is there, was always the leader in higher education in North America in terms of sustainability. And the rest of the city is too. There's so many things to learn from that example. And one of the books I picked up last week had a really great, the Resilient City book had a really good description of, of what they've tried to accomplish and how they've tried to accomplish over a number of years. Only a few more slides, hang with me. Next slide. Economy for the Common Good. I've been reading economics now for about the last five years. I've probably read about 20 different economics books, a variety of things. And this comes from one of the more recent ones, but also the one I maybe like, I hate to say, it's my favorite child. Comes from an Austrian economist called Christian Felber, who has proposed, and the subtitle of his, the book is called Change Everything: Developing an Economy for the Common Good. And this comes from what he, he calls a common good, quality practice sheet. So that every entity would do one of these sheets, would analyze themselves across these quadrants each year in terms of their performance. And then cities, he's suggesting you could have policies that in fact, the higher the score, the better access they have to city contracts, the better access, and if they have lower scores, you wouldn't want to support them. But if they're working for the common good, you'd want to do this. The ideas are engaging, they're possible, and actually, there's networks of these cities working on this in Europe. They haven't really come to the United States yet, but it's going on in Europe, a fair amount of that. In the United States, something somewhat similar, we have what are called B corporations. Have you, anybody here heard of B corporations? B corporations are called social benefit corporations. In Michigan, we have about, I think maybe 20 certified B corporations, including some fairly big players. These are corporations who in their charter state from the beginning that not only are we here to make a product or provide a service, but we also committed to the common good in some language or another, that there's a social benefit to what we are doing. And they perform, if they want to get certified, they have to fill out a, a quality sheet of this kind as well. And there's more and more people moving to this in the business world, is another example. Next slide. Next slide. So what do you do with all this stuff? My experience, again, having started from scratch, the MSU Office of Campus Sustainability, and having been a county commissioner, is that you need, it's not anything any one of you can do by yourselves, you're never gonna be able to delve deep enough into any of this stuff. It has to be a collective effort, and it has to be led by people who are, A, very passionate about the possibility of it, because there will be all kinds of barriers. They also have to be a connector. They have to be able to talk to people across various spectrums. I mean, that's all I did on campus mostly, was talk to the people in the planning, we talked to the faculty, we talked to the students, we talked to the administration, we talked to the budget people. We were talking to each other all the time to come up with solutions that integrated everybody. As a matter of fact, when people asked me when I left, what did I think was the most important thing that I did? And I says, I think the most important thing I did is we started to build a culture of this cross-silo work that wasn't going on. I noticed it in the, when I was there, for example, in comments from certain members of our administration who didn't want to deal with the city of Lansing. There was an inhibition to work across those boundaries because, oh, we can't work with those people. And this has to be negated, and we need people who are willing to go over and talk to the other side, engage them, to bring them in, to make them partners. This is extremely crucial in an urban environment for community development, in my mind, around what we call anchor institutions. Anchor institutions being things like LCC, MSU, Sparrow Hospital, those kinds of institutions that are not gonna get up and move, they're here. Other institutions might buy and sell themselves and move somewhere else if the deal's better, but those institutions are here for the long haul. They need to be at the table. They're the people that can really build the community and have more invested in it than some other players. You gotta also take it to the neighborhoods. This is super important. I know you folks represent neighborhoods, and Lansing has some really good, two people from neighborhood associations were up here today coming to talk to you. And I know people in the neighborhood associations when I was food bank director. That's really important that the dialogue is open and going and brought in. I had talked to Kathy Dunbar years ago, back when I think I was food bank director, around that time, about, I had failed to do this in Clinton County where I was commissioner, but I was trying to establish what's called participatory budgeting possibilities. Participatory budgeting, which is operating in some cities in the United States, takes a chunk of the budget and takes it to the people and goes through a process to get the ideas of how should we spend this money? And then there's a deliberation, comes back together, people within whatever that community is, in Chicago, I believe it's by Ward, some of the wards do it and some of the wards don't, they get to vote on where the money gets spent. That builds a strength of relationship between city government and the people to do this. There's all kinds of possibilities in this. I wanna end by a quote from probably my favorite writer, whoops, go back one. I almost have it memorized, but not quite. This is really important, Rebecca Solnit, who just had a wonderful piece just last weekend in The Guardian, but, "I say all this to you because hope is not like a lottery ticket you can clutch, sitting on the sofa feeling lucky. I say this because hope is an action, break down doors in an emergency, because hope should shove you out the door, because it'll take everything you have to steer us away from endless war, from the annihilation of the earth's treasures and from the grinding down of the poor and the marginal. Hope just means another world might be possible, not promised, not guaranteed. Hope calls for action. Action is impossible without hope. To hope is to give yourself to the future, and that commitment to the future makes the present inhabitable." With that, and the next slide, which is basically my motto, we are one human family on a single planet. We have one common future. And I think that sustainability offers a roadmap if you take it in the more deep sense of robust interaction with all the stakeholders, moving forward, addressing what are real emergencies. And there's a big decision going on right now, whether or not we are in a climate emergency. And I will, there's a flyer in here from a psychologist who talks about the distinction between acting as if it's not an emergency and acting as if it isn't, and compares what we did when we decided that World War II was there and the kind of decisions that you make when you're in an emergency. If you see the science as I see the science, and I'm not talking about just the physical science, but the inequality stuff is almost right there with the climate science, it's destroying the world. It's not just a problem here in the United States, it's causing people all over the world to move, as is climate. And those migrations of human beings on this planet, people who are suffering, need a place to go and need hope. Our role is maybe to provide some of that hope, some of that opportunity for both our people here and connect with those that are in the human family around the planet. And I think we can do that. I think there's opportunities for people that simply want to make more money, if they don't have enough, we can do that, too. There's skill opportunities, there's just incredible possibilities here. But you have to believe that there's a possibility, otherwise you won't get out of your chair and do something. I believe there's a possibility, that's why I'm here, that's why I told Brian that I'd be willing to give my time, not just here, but for a foreseeable future, to any organization that's willing to try to commit to move the planet forward for the betterment of all. With that, I'll cease, but hopefully, there's lots of questions.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Link. Yes, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Terry, for being here. So all this sounds very big and like, you know, I'm trying to get educated, but as far as, you know, it's global, obviously, because we face a global problem. But what can the city of Lansing do? I guess, how do we sell it to people who are concerned about budgets? Or what can we do to move forward that will impact its citizens positively? Because how can we impact Lansing's citizens?
Well, I think you need to do some inventory work, some of which you probably have within city government already, that somebody needs to kind of coordinate and say, where can I move something to do something else? So, for example, at Clinton County, I was the second Democrat, no, I was the first Democrat in a generation to be elected to the county commission. So I'm coming onto this Board of County Commissioners and another Democrat I got elected to, but we were a gross minority. So I met with my colleagues and learned their issues and their concerns, I learned how county government worked a little bit more, I looked around and I looked for opportunities. Even though we had almost brand-new county building up there in St. John's, I said, have we done a greenhouse gas inventory? Have we, do we really know if we're doing as much as we could? So we did a greenhouse gas inventory. We did it with in-house people, we rearranged, some people took us a little bit of time. Our operations are a lot smaller than the city of Lansing. But that gave us an opportunity to see where we were and to see where maybe there were some savings. And we did, we found some savings. And those savings actually end up leading to another whole revitalization, something that MSU is now doing, called recommissioning of the buildings. Because when you build a building, it's designed to spec and you put the equipment in, but it doesn't necessarily operate that way because it's designed on paper, it doesn't. But if you go back and recommission, I think, I can't give you the exact figures because I haven't been at MSU for a long time, but they were finding a substantial ten to twenty percent return on the investment for doing that recommissioning. So you have a lot of stock here for which you could do that. That's also a place where you got LCC over here that's training skilled trades. There could be a partnership between LCC and the city of Lansing to really do the inventory and to bring up the snuff, especially with some grant monies, neighborhood monies, to restore at least the city-owned material, but also to set up ways that you could start to fund. You'll see cities that have done this, where they fund solar in the neighborhoods on individual houses, and they find ways to do the tax breaks, so that the utility doesn't have to do it, but the citizens do it, but you make it easier for the citizens to do it. You're cutting the carbon, you're making that house more saleable. The recent studies on selling a house, I have solar at my place now, so putting solar on your house will get you a premium when you do sell it. Plus, of course, you're not paying the same cost in electricity. So there's, the possibilities are unbelievable. You'd need to bring together a team, A, to decide what you think sustainability is. But you should be able to link jobs, you should be able to link housing stock, you should be able to link transportation and other things together under a guided approach, looking, for example, through networks, looking at what other people are doing, just like I did when I was Sustainability Director. We were like, we were the first sustainability program on a campus in Michigan, and one of probably only forty or fifty in the United States when they started. Every college campus now has them, and we learn from each other, and those networks are incredibly important. I don't know if that helps, that's just a couple of ideas. But I think you want to bring people together to bring the ideas forward.
Thank you, just a couple more. One, one follow-up on jobs. So, you know, Lansing, we have a lot of sectors, a lot of skilled trades, and Jeremy, you can probably speak more to a lot of that, too, but a lot of unions as well. We have a whole group of people that work on our, you know, board, water, and light and everything. So what would the outlook be for, you know, our traditional jobs? I mean, is there room for growth or is it, or is there a possibility of, you know, reduction?
I would see the opportunity for growth in certain sectors, for sure. So, for example, one of the big studies done a few years ago about, of the hundred things you could do to cut carbon from the atmosphere, the number one thing they found was dealing with refrigeration, heating, cooling stuff. So there's not that many people employed in that area. That needs a lot of work. LCC, I believe, has a program in that. There's also, I know some people that work in the refrigeration industry here that do the work to go out to the grocery stores when the coolers break down, et cetera. All kinds of work in that. My idea of community development is you start by coming to it from a sense of local self-reliance. What are the things you absolutely need that would be best if you had locally? Healthcare, that's obviously, we already have a healthcare system here locally, luckily. Food, we need food, the more food we can grow closer to home, the better it is. We have more urban agriculture going on now, and the garden project at the food bank was one of the big generators of that, but now the Inglewood County Food Bank and lots of others are doing this. Joan Jackson Johnson's been a big supporter. So growing food and supporting local farmers with the marketplaces is one. Energy is another. So can we produce enough of the energy locally that we don't have to import it from some other place? We do that, we have a local utility, but we can disperse that, it doesn't have to be centralized. Or they can be the connector and run the grid and provide some of the backup power. There's a lot of different ways to do energy. We have experts in this community who know the intricacies of this energy piece of it. And the other thing, of course, is water. We have good water, we're blessed with good water. The last couple days, way too much water, but nonetheless, that's why Kathy's not here and why my place is a mess. So, but I think, no, I think there's a lot of jobs in there and things. Growing food, my son has an urban farm in Detroit, it's one of the oldest farms in Detroit, nine, this is ninth year, he's got four acres. It's labor-intensive, but we've taken it out, you know, we grow most of the things in soybeans, we use these huge tractors. I live in Clinton County, and that's how we mostly grow out there. But there's more room for small growers to grow more diversified food stocks, which is what we actually need, given that these kind of weather events and other kinds, the opposite, actual heat and stuff will make it crazier. So if we can build a community development model around local self-reliance concepts, we'll be better able to be resilient to the shocks that come at us, and it's very job-intensive.
Go ahead.
I mean, I don't know if anybody else has questions.
Yes, I've got other councilmembers, but go ahead.
One more then, if I may.
Go ahead.
So you mentioned a possible sustainability manager, and how would that person, could that person be qualified, I mean, by passion alone?
No.
Because we would, you mentioned Lansing's are already a bigger operation than MSU and other places. So how would that person help the city?
Well, one, so one of the examples that I showed you, hopefully, at least I hope I showed you, is that somebody who's really interested and has some background in it knows the networks, where you get the help. This is true in all the things that I work in. And there are lots of networks to tap into. Whoever you hire should be already aware of those networks, if not already tapped into those networks. Somebody that's not tied into those networks needs to learn them. The more recent Sustainability Director at MSU is someone who, when she came into that position, she contacted me and we met, and I talked to her about the networks to connect to. And she says this has been the most important part of what she's been able to do, and this person's pretty experienced. But being tied into networks, even as a legislator, as a county commissioner, I tied into National Association of Counties, which was at the time giving birth to something called the Green Government Initiative. So I went to the national conferences and met with those cities or counties that were doing some interesting things and tried to bring those ideas back. Could they fit here? Who did I need to partner with to make them work here? That kind of orientation is the kind of orientation you need. That and a willingness to listen to people, talk to people, explore, and then pour your passion and energy into it. But it's certainly doable. And, you know, Lansing's already lagging somewhat in that I assume that it's not tied into any of these networks in any aggressive way. I mean, Grand Rapids has a sustainability manager and has for a long time, they have a sustainability department, they're a bigger city. But other cities do, too. And there's some within our same size that we could learn from, and those would be the kin that one would want to develop to learn and to support as you move forward. It's also where you can share resources of some kind. The sharing of resources is really important, of course, to make things happen. And this is where I think local government and the anchor institutions, we need to get MSU to play better in this world. We got a new president coming in, you know, hopefully, you know, there's gonna be some interaction over the last couple of regimes that I haven't been particularly happy with that interaction with the city. But, you know, they're a big player, LCC's a player, and I think those people coming together can kind of make that happen.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President, and I appreciate you being here tonight, Terry, thank you. Could you touch base a little bit? I got online a while back when I became on the Intergovernmental Relations Committee meeting, and I seen that there was some marijuana activists in the group. And what I found online, it was out of Washington State, and they said that cultivating two-point two, a kilo of marijuana, was like driving across country seven times. And by using LED lights, it adds like a four-week cycle to their growing program they got going or whatever. Now, another thing is what I heard from the Board of Water and Light is that creating electricity, creating the energy for the lights is like thirty-something percent of the carbon, dirty carbon emissions, one of the dirtiest ways of, we're leaving our planet, you know, with a bigger carbon footprint. What do you suggest, I mean, to the people? I mean, because I know there's a lot of people that support marijuana, but I don't think they're educated in as far as the detrimental side of growing weed and using the high wattage lights for that. Do you know anything about that? Can you touch on that?
I don't really know anything about growing marijuana in the, which sounds like you're talking about, Jeremy, is what in the engineering world, we talk about as life cycle analysis. So you look at something from when you take the raw resource and you turn it into a finished product, what are the environmental costs of that along the way? So you look at toxicity issues, you look at energy issues, you look at, if it's agriculture, you're looking at soil health issues, and you try to measure all of those in combination to see which one is better than another. This is going on all the time, goes on in the food world, is the difference between people who are, who believe that, you know, that if you put enough chemicals into the ground, that that has a better outcome than if you just do organic agriculture. And there, you know, there's arguments, but if you dig into the literature far enough and you look at it, you come to your own assessments on that. And this is gonna go on continually in energy because it's such a big issue. I always argue that if we were manufacturing the stuff here as opposed to transporting it halfway around the world, A, that's a reduction in inputs right there, because transportation is always some part of that unless it's moving in a frictionless world, which mostly we don't. Chipping over the ocean is actually a little easier overall in its impact than other things. But you put something heavy in, like paper, and truck it all the way across the country, it's a, it's a, it's a huge impact, even if it's, when it's manufactured, it's manufactured using green energy or using Forest Stewardship Council Forest. So you gotta look at all of those people and make judgments. Like, I'll stop there. It's not, it's not clear-cut, but, you know, you got, you have people in the community and knowledgeable and people at the university who are studying these things all the time, looking for better ways to do it. You have to, you can't wait forever for the technology, hopefully it will come. You move with what you have, with what you're able to do. And the first thing to do is not the production, it's the cutting of demand. Cutting demand means you don't have to produce it in the first place. So have we done, have we done the energy conservation work that needs to be done in the city, first of all? And we did this at the county, I said, let's not invest in any solar or wind until we make sure we have the buildings operating the way they should and they're as efficient as they can, and then we won't need as much, we don't need as much production capability.
Well, my concern is the big marijuana park that's going in Windsor Township. You know, right now, and they're not even fully ramped up, they're using more power than General Motors has ever done. And General Motors has been our largest consumer here in Lansing. And they're seeing when that facility is up and running to its full capacity, that's gonna be using ten times the power General Motors ever has.
Well, I wouldn't be supportive of that if that's the case, that's for sure. But I don't know about the particulars, so I can't really speak to that. But there's other ways, you know, normally we grow things outside in the field, you don't need to import all that stuff. And, you know, the decision to do this indoor agriculture, and especially those that are using fossil fuel-driven energy to produce the electricity of the lights as opposed to unheated hoop houses, which are now coming up all over the state and they're all over the city now, we have those hoop houses, there's no, there's no added energy coming in there other than the solar that's coming in naturally. So there's ways to do hemp that would be way better than what it sounds like is going on at Windsor Township, but at least in terms of the environment.
Other questions for Mr. Link? One of the ones that I have, I know through Tri-County on planning, they were working, when I sat on that board, dealing they were working, when I sat on that board, dealing with waste and how to sell that waste to other companies to be able to use as a byproduct in something else. And so, I'm wondering how much study and information has gone into looking at some of those things? When you look at talking about GM, you talked about the hospitals, you've talked about, you know, we all are producing some amount of waste, and if it can be reused, that makes a huge difference as well.
Absolutely. And first, of course, reduce, then reuse, then recycle, of course. But yes, my wife and I have been running a volunteer recycling program in Langsberg for thirty years. Last weekend was our thirtieth anniversary. And I've been involved in the salad waste committees both in Clinton County and in Chiwasi County. And I was involved in the design of the recycling facility at MSU. And so, I'm pretty up on that. We've got some good players in this community. Granger's a pretty good player. Friedland's a pretty good player in terms of that. The problem in the industry is that the markets are driven by the quality of the stuff. In other words, if you wanted to produce a product and you wanted all-white glass or all-clear glass, and somebody brings you a mix and you can't use it, you, now it becomes a cost for you, and you have to find it somewhere else. So, part of the problem in all of this is, of course, China and the Asian countries that were taking a lot of our plastic waste have said, nah, we're not taking them anymore. So, we have to develop new markets.
Right.
And so, there's a lot of work, MSU is doing a lot of work on can we repurpose and find uses for these cast-offs? But again, could we reduce our consumption in the first place, like not even having plastic bags in every grocery store? Odd phenomenon. We need to think that triage, reduce, reuse, and recycle. But there is opportunity in waste. And not only that, demolition, demolition waste and the way that the restores are utilizing stuff as it gets torn down, comes into the store. I go to the restores all the time to buy stuff. That is a reuse that saves energy, builds opportunity, and builds jobs because it's very labor-intensive.
And I think what I'm more talking about is, let's say that a company ends up having a sludge that's left after they manufacture something. Then that sludge is sold to someone else who uses it in another part of their manufacturing so that they didn't have to create that. And that was part of what Tri-County on Planning was doing, was connecting one manufacturer with another manufacturer on those types of things.
Yes, it's called Waste Exchange Network.
Yes.
Specifically used among industries where there's an awful lot of product stream, waste material, potential waste material for some things that can be utilized by others. So, those agencies kind of look and they kind of create a little database of possible change. These people use this stuff, so maybe we can move from here to here. They could get a savings because now they don't have a dumping fee, and they could get it cheaper. Both players win. It doesn't go to the landfills. The landfills live longer.
Right.
They make all the sense in the world to be able to do that, and certainly, we should encourage that kind of opportunity.
Do we know how much, you know, again, when I was there, it was a small pilot. Do we have any idea how much interchange that's happened since then?
I don't. I haven't been involved in the county operations for since, about almost ten years. I haven't stayed up on it to be able to give you an accurate answer on that. I hope that it's moved forward somewhat, anyway.
Thank you. Are there other questions for Mr. Link? Yes, Brian, or Councilmember Jaxson?
Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson.
The city, we're working on a climate action plan. I guess, what, how, if at all, is that useful for our city in implementing, you know, some of the things that, ideas you have and that you talked about? And and I guess, how else, what's the biggest savings? Is it the reduction of, I'm sorry, efficiencies? Or is there other savings besides energy efficiencies?
Well, energy conservation, first of all. So, you take out the waste out of the system without really much investment of materials. I mean, because, let's think of it as a house. You have a house that's thirty years old. You've got these windows that were designed at a certain level. There's starting to be some leakage. You replace those windows to a more efficient window. That's efficiency. If you close the windows tighter, you put blinds over them, that's conservation. So, there's room for both of those. They're both, they both have, the conservation has more job potential. So, I used to be on the board, I was chair of the board of what was Urban Options. It's now Michigan Energy Options.
Right.
Where we, and I think there's been longstanding partnerships with the city to do the kind of work that goes in the neighborhoods and do those assessments so that people can do this. We know, I've seen in some of the stuff that I was looking through here, I can't remember which cities, but some cities are doing these programs where they put a pool of money, this could go into the neighborhood. Or they change some ordinances. So, if somebody wants to have a rental in some places, maybe you would say that they, if they have solar access or something, they should be able to put solar panels on there. Or they need to pass some sort of conservation pass-through. Or they get rated on a scale of this is a really green, efficient house, and they can charge more rent, or this is a really inefficient house, and they shouldn't have to. Because it falls on the renters if they're paying the utility bills
Right.
for heating and cooling and lights. And so, those kinds of programs are all possible. How they fit and which places, under who, I think is up for discussion and what actually works. Trial projects are always a good idea to see if they work at a small scale. Find a community partner that wants to help do it. Energy options would be one in that kind of a case. But depending on what you wanted to do, any number of things are possible. And I think there's huge savings potentially based on what I saw both at MSU and a relatively up-to-date infrastructure system to save energy. Vice President and I went out a couple nights at three in the morning, just drove campus at three in the morning to see how many lights were left on. And a couple nights of doing that in places that were empty, okay? So, I mean, if you just turned off those lights, I had this running battle with MSU Federal Credit Union and the new places up there having the lights on all night long, all the way through the building. I'm saying, I'm a member of your credit union. You're throwing this money out the window and you're throwing out this carbon out the window, you know, simply turning the lights off. And there's a lot of nuance to that. I used to be a custodial person. I know what it's like. And those are some of the issues that we dealt with at the university. But if we're able to fix them, but you have to have the intentionality to see where the leakages are in the system, plug the leaks, and then build an infrastructure that's better in community with everybody involved.
We have time for about one more question, and then we have to move on. Any more questions? Yes, Councilmember Jackson.
How does the Climate Action Plan come into effect? And are there good climate action plans and are there bad climate action plans?
I'm sure there are good ones and bad ones. I'm not, I'm not a student of them particularly. I've been working mostly kind of help by this, Chair of the Peace Education Center. I've been working on other issues. It's interesting that there's a new coalition nationally called People Over the Pentagon that's trying to take $200 billion out of the Pentagon and reinvest it back in community. That's $200 billion that's going out. And I could go on and on about the waste net, but I won't. So, I haven't been spending my time focused on those issues as much as I was ten years ago. I stay abreast of it to some extent, and because of some of the network sentiment, I'm aware of it. But I couldn't give you, some of the materials I, I'll let you have with me. There are those networks which surely give you some good examples, and that's what I'll do. I'll leave you each with a little packet of information. I only have one copy of the longer report, which I'll give to Sherry.
Sherry.
Maybe she can make copies for the rest.
Yep, she can do that for us, okay.
And I follow away, any questions along the line? My email's easy, link@msu.edu. I still am an emeritus, so I still have that, and Brian's got my phone number. I'd be glad to help, you know, move in that direction. It's the thing to do. Wayne Gretzky used to say, what was the story of his success? As an old hockey player, this, I played high school hockey. I really got this. He said he didn't skate to where the puck was. He skated to where the puck was going to be. Lansing needs to skate where that puck's going to be. It's better for the people that live here. It's better for the family that we share the planet with. It's better for the planet. Hopefully, you'll go there if you want my help. I'm here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. All right, thank you, sir, very much. That takes us on to a discussion on the fireworks ordinance. This was brought up in General Services, was passed out at the public hearing. But we started to hear a lot of concerns about fireworks. And so, someone had sent us in an email talking about, you know, disturbing pets and children and things like that. And at the same time, there was some discussion in the city attorney's office about state legislation that's changed. And so, it was recommended that we make sure that our ordinance complied with the state regulations. And what I'm going to do is turn it over to the city attorney's office and let him explain to us what those changes are, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, there have been, there's been a major change in the fireworks law, and ordinances of city have to, of cities have to comply with the new state statute. And if they do not comply, they're unenforceable. So, we turn this over to the staff, and Lisa Hagan volunteered to take a shot at the draft of the ordinance, and she's here to explain it for you.
And Lisa, if you could explain currently what our ordinance is and what these changes would be if passed by council?
Sure. Our current ordinance provides for consumer fireworks on the day preceding, day of, and the day after a national holiday. The state law has changed to specify specific dates, so I'll go through those. Consumer fireworks would be allowed December 31st until 1:00 a.m. on January 1st. The Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Memorial Day until 11:45 p.m. on each of those days. June 29th to July 4th until 11:45 on each of those dates. July 5th, if that date is a Friday or Saturday, until 11:45 p.m. And the Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Labor Day until 11:45 p.m. on each of those dates.
Councilmember Hussein's hand shot up as soon as they said June 29th to the 4th.
Well, yeah, I may have misunderstood when I reviewed the statute or the amendment to. So, I thought that it was June 29th to the 4th, and I thought it was Saturdays and Sundays between that window. Is that not the case?
It
Or is it, is it every, it's six consecutive days?
Yeah.
It is. It's June 29th until July 4th, and then July 5th if that date is a Friday or a Saturday.
So, we went from thirty protected days to twelve, is what we did.
But the other thing I think that's important is it was, again, you sort of knew it was the day before, the day of, and the day after. Now, especially with Fourth of July, we are talking about whether it's a workday or not a workday. We're talking from the 29th to possibly the 5th, but at least to the 4th. So, you're talking six days of fireworks. Councilmember Washington.
I don't have, thank you, Madam President. I don't have a question. I just have a comment. This is so disturbing to me, that we would have six solid days. It flies in the face of our noise ordinance. I understand dogs get upset and children, and people have to work. I get all that. But we also have, like we discussed in General Services, extremely ill people that are at home with hospice care, trying to fight cancer, trying to fight all kinds of things, and they have to listen to this for six solid days. I would encourage everybody to get a hold of your state legislators and get this off the books. This is, to me, unconscionable, just so we can get revenue from fireworks. It's disgusting to me. And I certainly will be getting a hold of my state legislators because I just, and I shared this. I got, I had a sick child at home, a very sick child, and I had to listen to this just for two or three days. But I can't imagine somebody dealing with this for six solid days while they're trying to recuperate. And I get the dogs, but that doesn't concern me as much as very ill people and children. It just doesn't.
Councilmember Jackson, then Councilmember Hussein.
Six days. Our country was founded in a war that lasted longer than six days. No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I hope so, because I can send some people your way.
I was just going to say, people really hate the fireworks in the neighborhoods, and that's one thing I noticed just from, just being alive. But the same problems are going to exist, I think. One is just the ignorance of the law. People don't know now when they can and can't, even though the neighborhood people who has to endure them know.
Yeah.
But the other regular people that don't necessarily pay attention doesn't know. And the other problem that's going to be the same is the enforceability. It's so hard for our police to respond and try to find where a firework may have went off in the dark when people are mostly inside. So, that problem's going to be there, and I wish I could just say how it's going to get fixed. But it sounds like our direction today is just from the legislature, like we must comply. So, maybe it's just going to be some education the best we can for our consideration.
Well, after six days, I'm sure the neighborhood will be able to figure out exactly where they're coming from. Councilmember Hussein.
I just wanted to acknowledge that in calendar years such as this year, when July 5th is actually a Friday, we're going to have seven days of consistent consecutive fireworks. That is, to me, just incomprehensible.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. Now, is there any way the city could override that? Let's say if we're in a drought and like the possibility of fires are present?
Jim, if there were, if this was considered a drought and the potential of fire, would an emergency be able to override?
So, the ordinance or the statute is pretty clear on the inability of a local municipality to go beyond what's in the statute. However, if you have an emergency situation, then in that case, the council could adopt an emergency ordinance if its health, safety, and welfare is at jeopardy. Yes. Obviously, everything gets challenged, but that would be the mechanism.
So, you know, part of what we have to do as part of this is, is we're going to be setting the public hearing for the 24th. This will be out in the neighborhoods. They're going to be, I'm sure, getting a hold of us and asking, why are you having this length, lengthy time from July 29th to July 4th or 5th? And I wanted you all to have the information so that when you get that, that you'll be able to follow up with them. I think the other thing is, is that we're being asked by law, not only on the day that we have the public hearing, but to pass it that day so that it's in effect for July 4th. And part of the thing is, is if we don't have one passed, we don't have any ordinance out there. So, there's no enforceability at all. Councilmember, or Vice President Spadeford, then the city attorney.
You just addressed my concern. I was going to say, if we don't get this done before the 29th, we don't have a law in place.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. City Attorney.
Well, that's correct. It won't be ordinance. Somebody pointed out that the new statute mandates a $1,000 fine for an infraction. It's not discretion. We're at $500 now. They bumped it up to $1,000. But the fact of the matter is, no matter what's on the books right now, these are the dates set by statute.
Lisa. Councilmember Hussein.
Just very quickly, and maybe I misunderstood what Jim said earlier. I thought that under the state statute, respective fire marshals could in fact ban use of fireworks on these days that are protected by the statute if there were adverse weather conditions that may cause problems. I thought that was part of the state statute.
We don't see that in the statute, but that's just basically law. I mean, if you have an emergency like that. And what I meant by challenge, you know, it can't be done arbitrarily. If there's a drought here, it's probably going to be a drought in other counties, and you might have a state action on that. But the mechanism would be to suspend the ordinance in the case of a fire emergency. We'd have to go through the emergency plan and then just adopt an ordinance, an emergency ordinance, to suspend the operation for the time being. But you're still dealing with the state statute out there that really doesn't pay much deference to rural cities. And so, you've always got that overriding concern that the state statute's still going to be out there. be out there.
So, I think the other question that I'm sure we will get from our constituents, as well as those that might come down to the podium during the twenty-fourth, is what is enforceability? Is it the fact that the police have to be able to see where the fireworks are being shot from? If I, as an individual, see where they are, can I do something? Can you address that?
It's classified as a civil infraction, so the burden of proof is preponderance of the evidence, and that could be done by circumstantial evidence. Who can issue the ticket can be issued by the enforcing officer, anybody who is listed as an authorized city official under our code. So, the standard of proof is less, so it can be done not just with eyewitness, but with circumstantial evidence.
So, if I say to the officer, I know that Jim Smurkas shot off those fireworks, I'm sorry, you're sitting right there, shot off those fireworks on one of the days that was not part of the six that you get to have in the other ones, can they issue a ticket based on?
Probably not just on the statement, but there would have to be some other investigation to determine who shot it off and if it was true. And again, it's not beyond a reasonable doubt, it's not a criminal statute, it's preponderance of the evidence, so the officer would still have to make up a case or have see some other. For example, if there's an auto accident and a police officer shows up and did not see the driving, but can determine from the evidence that, you know, there was an accident and who was at fault, the officer can write a ticket. This is sort of similar to that, again, being a civil infraction and not a criminal misdemeanor warrant, it's a different burden of proof.
Are there any other questions on this? Any other questions? Okay. That takes us into other, I had asked to see if we could have Mr. Kilpatrick here tonight to discuss the flooding situation that we've been dealing with, and heard back from the Chief of Staff, who said that Mr. Kilpatrick was not gonna be available, but she would address those issues, so Samantha?
Thank you, Madam President, and I did get some notes from Andy about some of the calls and things he's been hearing today and our team's been hearing. Specifically, if there's a basement flooding issue and anyone believes that it is a sewer backup, you can call our operations and maintenance department, the number, five-one-seven-four-eight-three-four-one-six-one, four-eight-three-four-one-six-one, for those of you watching at home or in the audience can call, and we'll have someone come out and investigate and make sure that the public sewer main is flowing properly. Sometimes there are issues with the private sewer lead, and we don't know exactly what's happening until someone comes out to investigate. We don't address backyard flooding, or do anything to keep rainwater out of people's basements. I say as someone who has both backyard flooding and water in my basement, so it's a bit of a rough day. And then for water in roads, including the clogged catch basins, again, cooperation and maintenance. And if a catch basin has been plugged by debris on the road's surface, we encourage homeowners, if they're able to, or willing to go out and clean those out. I know our neighbors, we're on a corner downtown, and everyone kind of takes turns cleaning those out if you're able to, because that really helps keep things flowing. We do have a couple of areas that are low-lying that generally get a lot of flooding, Sycamore Park's a great example, we did have to close Pennsylvania Avenue this afternoon, right by Potter Park, or earlier today, and several cars stuck in the water there, so if you, we will be continuing to monitor Public Service and the Police Department, areas where there is high water, and closing those off, and sending out alerts through the Nixal system or on social media. And again, if anyone sees what, high water, even if you think you can get through it, don't try to, because it's a really bad idea, as we all know, and so, I think everyone thinks they can make it, and it just ends up being challenging, so, and then again, if you, if anyone sees those high flooded areas, you can call Public Service or the Police Non-Emergency Department, and we'll make sure we get someone out to barricade those off. So, we're trying to be as proactive as possible. I know our Public Service Director is actually out tonight later, he says he's gonna run around and do some specific calls about some areas he had gotten some concerns about, so we're certainly being as vigilant as possible, and really, a lot of it is just reporting things that you see, being safe, not driving into high water, and we'll get out and investigate for all the people who give us a call.
Are there questions on this? I have a few. One is the Birchfield area, I understood that this afternoon, that we had some of the manholes shooting up again with geysers, and that has been a problem area over there before with the flooding. I'm not sure, Jeremy, whether you've got any calls on that yet or not, but that has been a problem over there.
Okay, I'll make sure to have Andy.
Then Downing Street that's over near Westwood, that area, apparently, we bring in trucks to help pump out the water over there, and we see several pictures on how bad that area was over there, so I'm not sure whether they have addressed that or not.
Okay, I'll double check with Andy.
Okay. And then, some of the concerns have been, where are we with the street sweeping? I know we had started, but I've heard that some neighborhoods, I heard that Avril hadn't had anything done over there, Councilmember Hussein? And so, you know, where are we on those? The other question was, at one point, every so often, we would go in and take out the grades and actually vacuum out, suck out the debris that was in there. There's been concerns that since we haven't done that in some time, that there is a combination of dirt and sand and debris, sticks and leaves, that have sort of created like a cement, I mean, it's almost like an adobe that you would have, that are clogging the drains that are making, that are creating some of the backup that is there. Are we no longer doing the vacuuming of these? Is it the fact we don't have the equipment to do it anymore? Is it the fact that we don't have the personnel to do it? Do we have any idea what, what those issues, you know, what we're doing?
I know we have the equipment and the personnel, because I know we, they were vacuuming last summer in my neighborhood and other neighborhoods, so unless, I don't know if we've gotten to it yet or not, but I will ask Andy all of these, and then I'll send you all an email to follow up, so you know, and if you have any other areas that have come up in the interim, you can, we can include those as well.
Okay. I understand there was quite a few basement backups in the GrowSpec area, I saw that, Councilmember Washington, on Facebook, there was a number of comments about that. I'm not sure how many of them are Lansing and how many of them are Lansing Township, but that, that has been an issue there. And Councilmember Jackson and Hussein, Colonial Village, there were a number of backups in the Colonial Village neighborhood in the basements over there as well.
And some of these low-lying, and again, I had these ultimatums, some of these low-lying areas, I used to live in Colonial Village, my basement backed up every time there was a heavy rain, which is really frustrating, we just wanna make sure people know what the options are, and if there's anything we can do to help. And in some cases, there may not be, but we wanna investigate.
How many of them, again, we have the Backflow Valve Program that we have allocated dollars for, how many of them are we offering that to that are, when they're calling in with this, once they get a cleanup, that we're not, you know, that we're giving them the ability to get that done so that they won't have the situation again?
And again, I don't know, but I'll find out.
So, if we could look into some of those, those things, I would appreciate it.
Of course.
Okay. Councilmember Hussein?
Just more of a comment to the council, you know, this is something that we discussed, and I'm talking more about the street flooding and obviously the catch basins, this is something that we discussed when Andy Kilpatrick was before us, and it was stated that we used to street sweep at eight and four, so eight basically swipes through our major roads and four through our local, and we're down to four and two. We have got to, and you know, I think in subsequent fiscal years, we have to make sure that, one, our street sweepers are operable, and then, two, that we're actually funding this critical service. Jeremy and myself, we, and you were tagged as well, but we were tagged with regards to some street flooding that happened in the Birchfield-Bell Air area, so we visited this morning. We did clear those three catch basins, but there were parts of the road where, with regard to debris and plant matter, I mean, we had an inch to, almost two-inch buildup on the street. So, you know, another rain that's gonna clog the drains right back up, and they're gonna have flooding again, so we have to figure out a way to, again, I view that as a critical service, and we have got to find a way to prioritize and to fund that particular service in subsequent fiscal years.
Councilmember Garza, and then Council, Vice President Spatafor?
Thank you, Madam President. And Samantha, since you have a lot of inquiries going out to Andy Kilpatrick, you know, I feel like I gotta ask, I mean...
Just pile on.
Okay, so I've got something that I've been working on for, yeah, about a year and a half now, and hasn't really got much places, but I did have a meeting with Public Service about two and a half months ago, about two, maybe about two months ago, and there's a property at fifty-eight oh nine Schaefer Road, that the culverts are, been clogged up for quite some time, and this gentleman's property, when we get a substantial amount of rain, it, his whole property up to his porch floods, and that's the current state we're in right now with all the rain we've got. And I know Public Service was supposed to be drafting a letter with a couple of options for the adjacent properties, and I'd like to know where we're at on that, because I've asked a few times, and I haven't got an answer.
Okay, I'll find out.
Thank you.
Vice President Spatafor?
Thank you, Madam President. To Councilmember Hussein, too, in the Public Service Committee, we've talked a little bit about the ways we can try to increase street sweeping, and Director Kilpatrick has mentioned the possibility of purchasing less expensive equipment that might attach to trucks we already own and things like that, they wouldn't be as robust and as good as the vacuums necessarily, but they do help clean out those gutters on a more regular basis and a more cost-effective way. So, I know they're looking at it, but it definitely needs to be something that we should be talking about more proactively as well, so I thank you for doubling up on that.
Okay. Anything else on this matter? Councilmember Washington?
Thank you, Madam President. Whatever you can do to bring this street sweeping thing along, because not only does it help with flooding, but I know in my area, we have a lot of bikers, and these bike lanes are very dangerous when they're full of debris, so it's also an issue, you know, with our bikers also, thanks.
Anything? Councilmember Spatafor?
That's a wonderful point, too, Councilmember Washington, in fact, I don't know if you've seen the article yet, but this, we hate them, I know, but the scooters are coming back, and in those fees was an amount of money to help offset the cost of keeping those bike lanes clean as well, so that could help with street sweeping on some of our major roads, so, not the ultimate solution, but definitely part of it.
Anything else? Then we are adjourned until seven o'clock, thank you. Okay, thank you. All right.